State will call Ramsey County Attorney. What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes? Second.
Aye.
All four, motion carried. Bill? Can we look for a candy?
Yes. There's an additional list.
Additional.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? You have an highway in your district, yeah. We'll call.
Lepin?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Financial? Can we?
I'm gonna have to look into transferring the rest of the money into the LPLC.
Date?
Yeah. I'll have figures at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yeah. Have to repay this month's bill.
Any other questions?
Move to approve financials.
Second. Motion is second on the financials. Any other questions? We'll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Lepin?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Charging checks?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, they're second?
Second.
Second. Any question? We'll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lepin?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Approval of agenda, are you gonna add?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda, they're second?
Second.
Second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All four, motion carries. Calling the recorder, you hear that?
Hi. I have a couple of things today. The first thing is my deputy net has put in a letter of resignation for May 31st. They're, her and her husband are going to move to Texas. They're going to warm their climates. And so I have started the process with Crystal HR on hiring. We are currently accepting applications. Today is the closing date, so I'll be interviewing and hopefully we'll get someone who can possibly start June 3rd, which would be the first Monday in June. We started with a salary at the step one, on the current step scale of 2814 a month. That's what we advertised at depending on experience. If we didn't get something with some more experience, we might consider something more, but that's likely where we're gonna start. The other thing in regards to that is it's very hard for me to be gone out of the office with a brand new person because it takes quite a bit of training to work alone, but the Recorder's Convention is in June and I'm currently the Vice President and due to be installed as the President of the Recorder's Association on June 12th. And so I did talk to Lucas a little bit about that because I was feeling quite bad that I would be the President and I wouldn't even be there. And he thought it might be possible for us to go limited services or possibly even close for just one day. So I could go down for the business meeting portion where they do the installation of the officers and then the President takes over the meeting at that time. I would at least be there for that little bit. It isn't Bismarck, so I would just work the whole day before, go down at 5:00 and then I would be back, you know, it's probably gonna go until noon, 1 o'clock, so I wouldn't be back in time to reopen the office that day, but I certainly would be there the next day, so it would just be one day. So I was looking for approval for that just so I can use this month now, between now and then, to let my customers and like the attorneys in the abstract office know that we'll have limited service or even be closed that day.
I'd need that emotion.
Okay. Second. You know, that day is fine. Is there anybody else in the court out that could help you out, you know, a little training for her or who have you been?
Unfortunately, unless you're deputized, you can't record documents unless you're trained to be a passport agent. You can't accept passport applications. So there's really not much anybody can do.
I'd like one over to make coffee then.
I mean, they can answer the phone and tell them to call back later, the next day. You don't call back when Katie's here or they, even the receiving of documents can be difficult because once the documents are in our office, they become an issue. So if I have to reject them for any reason, it's delayed a day and sometimes we have problems with that, so.
When you brought up the phone issue, is that an idea that we could probably put something on for that day you're gonna be gone?
Oh, absolutely. I could change my voicemail message and tell them.
Tell them you'll be back the next day.
That I'll be back the next day, yeah.
You should probably. No problem then. Got a motion, we got a second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All four, motion carries.
I do have one more thing and that is my miscellaneous documents that were in the books have been scanned by US Imaging and I now need to have the images transferred into my recording software with my recording software vendor, which is Tyler. I do have the proposal and quote for that. They used to give a discount and I tried to negotiate with them to get it lowered, but they said now they do a flat rate and that's what it is. It's $4,000. It's coming out of the Endrin Fund, which is currently at $50,000. So there's plenty of money and it's just something, it's just part of the process. It's something that has to be done, so I would ask for approval for that.
They've done those pretty big books.
The only books that are left are the mortgage books, so that's the next set that I'm gonna quote from US Imaging for and then all of the big books in my office will be scanned with computer and backed up, which is probably the most important.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
So you want a motion from us on this?
Yes, I need it approved because it's $20,000.
I think I need a motion to approve. I'll second.
Got a second? And that will take care of everything that we need to do this year? Is that correct?
I might be back if I can get the proposal from those mortgage records being that it appears I do have enough money to do that, but we'll see what they come out as. That's the biggest set of books, so it's gonna be the most expensive set of books to do, so we'll see what they say.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
We got a second? You did that. We'll call.
Lepin?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Katie, anything else?
That's everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Steve?
Okay, just a couple of things. The first is the annual maintenance on our GIS software, which is $3,000. Like a purple for our.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion, second?
Second.
Take care of that one, Steve. You got some other stuff?
No. The second is, we better boil that.
We'll call.
Britt?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lepin?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Katie, go ahead, Steve.
The second is out of state travel to the annual Esri Conference for the GIS software that I guess I've been attending for the last, I guess every year I've been here and several years before that as well.
Make a motion to approve the out of state travel.
Okay, motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All four, motion carries. Alright, that's it. Thank you.
Roger? I was at the last meeting, but I understand there was some discussion during the wheelchair lift of whether we could kinda schedule the contractor like December before we know whether or not we can do the, get the grant. We can't do that. We either go with the grant or we put it in ourselves. Okay? And Adam?
Yeah, Roger and I sat and talked to Sandy a little one day and tried to, basically what it comes down to is if we go, if I'm wrong, correct me, but if we go the grant route proposal, you have to wait to schedule and so you have to solicit bids then. So you, once you get approved for it, get everything lined up, then you have to get the bids and then once the bids are approved and then you make your pick, you know, they approved the little bid and then you can schedule the order. So we gotta wait till, but you did say that basically that the grants, we would have a pretty good idea, was it August? I think she said.
Yeah, but still.
They're gonna rank everything in August, so a pretty good idea if we're gonna get it then and then it takes, what, six to eight weeks basically to get everything lined up, Department of Commerce back and forth and then you could schedule it. So we'd be looking all, you know, looking at probably September, October when you can schedule it.
Yeah.
So by end of the year, it'd be pretty tough, I think. Possibly.
If you want it installed for the extension roundup, chances are it won't make it, so.
We could have the paperwork done by when then, you think?
She needs it, I think by June. Actually, I already, well, yeah, we've already got a lot of paperwork done for the initial part and yeah, I think she wanted that in June and then they all started their part of it.
Yeah, they go through a process of ranking everything dependent upon need and all that and anything with ADA compatibility and stuff like that is ranked pretty, is ranked very high, so it's usually something that's gonna get approved, but there's a camera would help indicate when there's if there's more things that need to be done more readily or more, you know, quickly than those will get approved above it. So you don't have, you don't really know until, you know, you don't wanna watch it out there that needs to be done.
So just what it boils down to is either we do it or we wait.
And we're talking like, December will probably have a pretty good idea.
Alright, that's up with my understanding is kind of we have an idea by that point.
Not far off.
I don't know.
I've heard otherwise, but you know, we've already made our decision, so.
Oh, well, we haven't necessarily. We've just put it in the brief. We can always pull it if we want to.
Well, I think we decided last time to wait around because I prefer the grant and we'll do that.
Everybody's alright with that?
It's not my favorite thing to do, but I mean.
No, I know what you mean.
I'd like to get it done, get it scheduled, but it could be one thing if it was a grant or something.
Do we talk to the outfit? Do we think we're gonna do it or?
Do we talk to them?
We don't need to schedule anything.
Well, I already have talked to them. You know, they're the ones who came and gave the estimate. They know what to expect, so.
They know we're thinking about it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, very good. That's probably as much as we wanna do then.
And then if we go through the grant part, then they do like, they try and find more contractors too. They may find another one, they may not, and so.
So we just leave it the way it is then? Is that alright with the board or? What do you think, Adam? You kinda hesitate?
Well, I mean, I just don't wanna see us getting any, you know, troubles essentially since we don't have compliance. I mean, if we're gonna, I guess the question is, the only way you're gonna get around waiting is by not having anything scheduled in the basement until, you know, and that, I don't know what kind of, you know.
There usually isn't a lot.
Yeah, not just some.
No.
But I just don't wanna get in that situation where we, you know, you know, who's all it takes is one person that has a problem with it and we have an event in the basement.
I guess we don't schedule up in many days.
Well, the only thing coming up would be the extension roundup and like I said, chances of us having it ready by then, it probably won't happen. It might, but. Regardless of how it's paid for. Regardless of, well, if we decide we're gonna do it, you know, we could call them today and say, well, let's get this on and come and do it as soon as you can and it might well be done by January, sure, but going through the grant process, more than likely not.
Well, the extension roundup's gonna have to dance around it then, I guess.
You know, there's only one time I think it was ever used when the old one was operating.
Once?
One time.
How many years?
One, one time. Uh, no, it didn't have that long. I don't know, eight maybe?
Oh, okay.
That it was ever used, but.
They'll just have to be aware of it.
Well, all it takes is one time for somebody to be denied access.
Well, I mean, who's not scheduled nothing down there?
You know. Yeah. And no, normally we have nothing, I mean, other than aerobics or shooting and archery, which is 4H projects and the ground.
Wait out?
I guess what we gotta do unfortunately.
Anything else, Roger?
No. So we're gonna go ahead with the grant process then? Okay.
That's what we decided last meeting.
Oh, alright. I guess I have something running different, but okay. Well, then when you guys have signed, I turned in the paperwork. I had the candy and you guys need to sign off on it. I'll get that back to Shandra. Didn't we make a motion to do that last meeting? Oh, I ordered her.
And they're good to go on that.
Alright.
Carry on?
Carry on? Thanks.
Morning. The month of April is very, very busy for the Veteran Service Business. This morning, Jeffy even asked me, the 143 veterans that I listed, 30 plus of those were the first Saturday in April. I spoke out of Camp Craft and to a large group of National Guard gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen and a lot of those people are starting to plan their retirement. Therefore, the numbers got very high for the month of April. Kept me really busy, learning a lot more processes of what the guard retirees are going through, so we're very busy in that aspect of seeing a lot more guardsmen coming through. Other business that we got going on, the May 31st, we have a veteran stand down here in the Armburial. That will be an event for veterans and their families. We are anticipating 200 plus for the day, which will have booths set up with different vendors showing their, what they do for veterans, veterans' families, you know, USDA, NDSU, organizations such as that, plus all the Veteran Service Clubs and whatnot will be there and that we're anticipating is gonna be the first one for this area. It should probably be very well attended, plus we've already heard interest from the Devil's Run, that's the first day of Devil's Run, so we've anticipated a lot of out of the area veterans coming with their cars and whatnot to attend also. So we're hoping for a good turnout for that. And on that same line, we've got, in the planning stages, July 27th at Stone Lake Park, Nelson County is going to host a similar event, a little smaller scale, and that'll be more centered on women veterans, Blue Water veterans and veterans who've never signed up for anything in the past. We're seeing the Blue Water issue has turned out to be very, generating a lot more business also and so we anticipate that to continue through the summer. So I do wanna mention one other thing, in my report that I, I did have a gentleman from Detroit Lakes came to see me in Lakota and he had heard through the VA and through other VA sources that he couldn't find his district paper, so he came to me and I found it for him and he was saying, well, how in the hell can you find it? Nobody else at the VA could find it. Well, he was an old Nelson County resident from way back, World War II and so we had a record of it in the state system and so I was very proud that I was able to help that gentleman who had to come from Minnesota to North Dakota to find his papers. So that was a pretty good deal right there. That made me feel pretty good. But that's about the nature of the business right there.
Thank you for putting the effort in for that channel then.
No, and the thing was, it took about five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
And he'd been chasing around how long?
Well, he'd been going out for a few months in Fargo, but being underlying, the gentleman that told him to come and see me, I didn't recognize the name. He was from Northwood originally and he knew me from golfing. So, another benefit to golf.
I'll disagree with you there.
So I anticipate we're gonna be extremely busy for the next two months for certain, anticipating these stand down events to bring in veterans who haven't signed up in the past. And I'm still seeing Vietnam era veterans that have never signed up for benefits coming in, so it continues to work. Yeah.
We all know why they haven't come in. They weren't very appreciative when they came home.
That's right, yeah.
There's a lot to that. Thank you.
Very good.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move into Kyle, go ahead.
Alright. Good morning. Most of you probably don't know, this is the National Tourism and Travel and Tourism Week, May 5th, the 11th. Make sure you mark that on your calendars, important week. Hey, it's my, it's my pleasure and honor to come to Ramsey County Commission today to honor some of Ramsey County's best and brightest. Let me start with Susie Kanner. Susie was recognized at the State Tourism Conference on April 17th in Minot. Susie was awarded the Legend Award for Travel and Tourism Industry Leadership, which is the big kabuna award that's given out every year. And in their words, let me repeat what they had to say. Susie Kanner, in addition to performing her job at an extraordinary exemplary, excuse me, level for close to a decade, Susie demonstrates an extraordinary commitment to the state and the community she serves. In 2010, during a crucial road construction period through Devil's Lake, Susie acquired and maintained a position on Public Service Information Coordinator for the project. Susie was instrumental in keeping the lines of communication open between the community members and tourists traveling through the Devil's Lake area. Kanner's always been willing to pitch in regardless of the mission. In 2014, she was, she's worked with others to spearhead Community Wellness Center, Convention Center Project votes. She sits on numerous boards and committees, including the Downtown Revitalization Committee and the Downtown Streetscape Project Committee in 2018, both giving away to the current Main Street project that we all are aware of. Kanner was served as President of Destination Marketing Association in North Dakota and a member of the Travel Alliance Partnership, also known as TAF. Kanner has grown Devil's Lake CDB, Facebook followings to 43,000, providing innovative media ideas like media personalities and interactive activities, Walleye Awards, which I'll mention, talk a little bit more about, just a little bit. She's also developed an award-winning visitor guide in 2017 to showcase Devil's Lake as a must-see destination. Really what they failed to mention though, that I really am proud of Susie with, being that we work a lot together with different sports shows and promotions that both affect our resort and other resorts and of course tourism. Susie has taken the lake region out of the Stone Age in my opinion as far as modern marketing techniques. Our brochures, our high-quality ads, if you've ever seen our sports show on the road, it's amazing. You know, our flyers that we hand out used to be pretty plain. They are now award-winning pieces of media that we distribute around the country. So, hey, I'd like everyone to give Susie a big round. Besides that award, her employee and her, Susie and Tanner Churney also got the award Telegraph Award for Marketing Technology. Now, has anyone heard about the Walleye War wars that happened this winter? Okay, well, you're one of 16 million people that have heard about it, okay. So that was really an amazing process. The concept of Walleye War started at the networking conference and evolved into a fishing challenge between Devil's Lake and Lake of the Woods. Now, they're our big competitor. That's our big one, especially in the winter time. So they had a state-to-state, lake-to-lake battle, a head-to-head competition that took place on Facebook on January 3rd. Both parties went live on their own feeds from St. Paul Ice Fishing Show, which is the nation's largest ice fishing show. Within a week, the Associated Press had picked up the story and soon it reached over 8 million people from Vancouver to Washington DC, the start of it. Exposure has significant destination accounting, 240,000 video views, an estimated reach of 500,000 on Facebook and again, 16 million to Associated Press stories, which is incredible. It's a true example of thinking outside the box and not necessarily working against your competitor, but working with him. Congrats to Susie and Tanner on that award as well. So again, hold on another hand. Big major award, just a huge one this year, which is really great. Okay, but on a serious note, recent comments by some of the county commissioners caught the area tourism industry by surprise. It reminds us that once in a while, we've gotta toot our horn and we've gotta educate our local officials on how important tourism is on the region, on the communities and economy. And here's just a few facts that I hope you guys will take away with today. Tourism is the number three industry in North Dakota, number two in Ramsey County. 559 direct jobs, and this is 2015 number, so that's the best I can come up with, and over 700 if you add indirect jobs in Ramsey County alone. One in 10 of your fellow residents in Ramsey County work in tourism. Pretty incredible numbers to think about. $98 million were spent in Devil's Lake in 2011 on fishing alone and that's old numbers. What is that today? 100 million? I don't know, but it's definitely grown. Over 3,000 seasonal campsites now are in the Devil's Lake area, which when we first started, we had first 150, I mean, or 56 to be honest with you. And so now we're over 3,000 seasonal campsites and growing. You take 3,000 times 2.5 people, that's 7,500 people on any given weekend. I mean, you take, adding the resorts and the hotels, Devil's Lake essentially doubles in population on a busy weekend, which in my lifetime, I never would've thought we'd see that. We're doing that and we're growing exponentially every year, so there's no science at all of that growth slowing down. Ramsey Island State Park, number one busiest park in the state. It's the only one that's self-sufficient. It's been the busiest state park in 19 years in a row and it's in your county, don't forget. It's way off in the middle of nowhere, but it is in Ramsey County. Devil's, this is an incredible number here. Devil's Lake Lodging and Restaurant Taxes collected, have gone from 292,644 in 2010 to 405,000 and a change in 2018. That's incredible jump. Again, it's not showing, throwing any signs of decline. We've gotta remember, we're past the construction rush that we had with all the dikes and roads. Those guys have been gone now for a couple of years. These are numbers, are standalone tourism numbers that we are creating in house, in state, in the county. And Devil's Lake's considered a top 10 Walleye, or excuse me, waterfall location in North America. We just got some awesome recognition this last winter about that. You know, we can't save everything. We can't save Kmart. We can't, you know, they lost 2,000 stores out of their 2,200 stores in the last 10 years. We can't save Leaver's South, but we for damn sure can build three new hotels, four new restaurants and lots of other economic activity that's occurred, along with $7 to $10 million invested in local resorts and campgrounds. Thank you for your commission, for the commission for letting me speak today. We are your neighbors. We make a difference every day in the lives of you and your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Susie. You're doing a very good job.
Outstanding work.
Yeah, I noticed that a little bit.
Kyle, I forgot to mention, he also won the award back in 2005 years ago?
That diminished the value of that.
Oh, whatever. Oh, whatever.
He's trying to prop it up to make himself better.
I didn't want to start all of them on the whole.
He won it five years ago.
I think it was four or five years ago, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That would have possibly, I know this is probably out of position on here, but there are a few other folks in the tourism industry that are here that would maybe have something they'd like to add if they could.
No problem.
I was at the North Dakota Tourism Conference. It was my second year going there. Been in the game 25 years, and I remember the days with Kyle. You could hardly get North Dakota tourism folks to even say hello to you 25 years ago. And the, just, it was a three-day conference, and just, you know, chumming around with Susie and Paula and Tanner. I mean, the respect that is felt from this group is unbelievable by, they're marveled by other cities in the state. To have this wonderful fishery and region to promote is a bullet in their chamber. It's incredible. And I guess, you know, they walked away with half the governor awards at the governor's luncheon. And to come back from Minot and to hear some comments about tourism is not really a viable industry was kind of a slap in the face. Some of the comments that were made at the last meeting. And, I mean, I was on a roller coaster high. Coming back here to hearing some of that, it's just, education needs to happen. Tourism couldn't get better here. We're the envy of the state. I don't understand why it has to be farmer versus tourism. I think that we need both.
Absolutely. You're totally right. Totally right. I guess we've always known this is gonna come, when the lake started receding. But I just, granted the date was gonna come, I knew it would come. When you sit in these chairs, you have to make decisions sometimes that doesn't make everybody happy.
We totally understand the decision this last one you had to make, and I think people polled half of us who would support that one. You know, beyond that is when it's gonna get dicey, obviously. But I think beyond that, it's out of our control anyway.
Absolutely.
You know, the thing I tell people, I've lived on the lake for 30-plus years, and I've been in the business for 31 years, been there since I was a kid, so most of my adult lifetime. There's no, virtually, we have very little control over it. We have a little bit on the top end, not all the pumps, but, you know, you give us a couple more big rains, and those pumps can barely keep up. So, I mean, I get it. I totally get your last deal, and I would support that. You just, let's not try to get where we fight one side or the other, because we need both. We're so thankful to have an amazing farming industry and to have a great tourism industry. It's a blessing for our community, so. When they both work, they really work well together. Yeah, I think they work well together 99.9% of the time. It's just, it's a blessing, because most of us here have been here for a long time now. We didn't have those resources before, so, and it was a precious jobs.
We needed inlet. Then we could control it.
I wish that...
We need a bike.
I agree.
The only way you get water in here is standing fast and you have to buy it, so we need to come from somewhere.
We're at the window of opportunity with the Cheyenne, or with the Missouri River conversion of Fargo is getting shorter and shorter, and that's, yeah, that's a mess, dude. We're hard time getting a bike home. The one coming in is gonna be really tough.
You had to really think outside the box, and we got the outlets put in.
Right.
But why can't we think outside the box and get an inlet put in? And I really think that can be done.
I hope so.
Trying to take some convincing at the money level, you know, where it's gotta come from, from the state. I think it's possible, very possible.
Well, you'll definitely have support from the tourism industry, obviously, if there's ever any political direction that needs a help or a push, you can call on us.
And I'm sure we could support from the farming commission, or community, because if we had a stable lake, you know, everybody could thrive.
You're gonna catch more hack, I think, from the average person that lives in the county that is a fisherman. That's concerned about its quality of life issue for them, more so than you're gonna hear from us.
Right, I know what you're saying. Yeah, it's, the meeting's on Thursday. What time? 9 o'clock?
1:00.
1:00 P.M. I hope some of you come.
That's the current.
If you haven't seen the process, of course, you should see how it works.
It's pretty good, for sure.
Show your concern and try to come to a consensus, you know, we gotta find something to support. If we sit up here and don't say nothing, support one way or the other, then they're gonna say we don't give a damn and write what they want, so.
Do we have local representation on that board?
The drivers' board?
Chat business, okay.
Myself, Dick Johnson, Bill Mertens, Towner County will have somebody.
Nelson?
Nelson will have somebody. I think it's Ben Barneson.
Benson.
Benson County has Mike Stephan. So there's 17 people appointed to that board. Eight or so from the Devil's Lake basin side of things, and then another eight or so down in the other side of the Cheyenne. You know, Valley City, Lisbon, Fargo, Grand Forks. I don't know if Ransum County has somebody down there. And then Minnesota and Manitoba also have a voice on there. There's where your bigger opposition comes in for operating the pumps are those two entities with water quality. They don't like the water quality coming out of Devil's Lake. But, you know, we really have seen or heard really good things from the downstream, for the most part, you know, other than some erosion issues that they get mitigated dollars for. People appreciate the flow within the Cheyenne River come July, August, when it's usually pretty stagnant. So, you know, fishing has been good, long bear recreation has been good. Stacy, he lives on the, in between the two outlets down in the Cheyenne River by Calm, and he said, "Turn those pumps on, the river's getting low." "Try and catch some fish down here." So, there's a lot of benefits to operating those pumps downstream that people enjoy and appreciate. It's just a matter of operating at the right times and the right conditions.
Fargo wants our water.
Fargo wants our water, and we're part of their emergency drought mitigation plan until they get that pipeline, pipe dream, I should say, over from the Lake Audubon. They are requiring needing our water supply come those low flows in the Red and the Cheyenne.
They pull quite a bit of water out of the Cheyenne in summertime for community initiatives.
I think it's a great opportunity, that Thursday meeting, to bring in the idea of an inlet.
Why not? You know, if anybody's gonna listen, it would be Governor Burton. He's been, he's not a typical politician, and, you know, I think he would, something he could listen to if he had the right presentation. We've tried to talk to him about it, and he's, it piques his interest, but if more were to follow along, I think he could see some benefits to it.
Be a good place to start. Stabilize it. Yep, I mean, with your figures, you can show the benefits that community gets from it all. Why not stabilize like now?
Something that's been talked about since before, staid.
You'd say nothing, yeah, if you see stabilization series.
You stabilize it, and those numbers are gonna explode. You've got certainty on where the number's gonna be, the best run rate will be crazy.
Every year is gonna be a confrontation here trying to decide whether to water on the pumps or not. But everybody knows, when the lake, if the lake go to the 46, pumps aren't usable, so.
Right. Do you think there's political will to make them usable? I mean, there's not, I mean, I don't know if it's physically redesign them to make lower type pipes.
I don't know.
You'd have to go through the whole permit process again, and I don't think there's the...
Probably you're right about that.
I'm from up in that country, and I get it. I'm from ground zero. I mean, I've got all kinds of family that have been brutally affected by that. And so I totally get where they're coming from, too, and, you know, that's our whole, my whole neighborhood. So, I, there's some, God, hopefully someday we can find a happy medium, where most of us are happy. No one's ever gonna be all happy. Never gonna be ever be an opportunity to make us all happy, but if most of us happy, then what the heck? That's pretty good.
I think the big reluctance that the state has always had is artificially putting water on private property and then having to come up with that compensation package for that.
Big time.
You know, when our constitution says you can't gift money to citizens of the state, so if that would be considered a gift, but I really wouldn't, you know, a bio kind of thing, but that's how they justify not doing it.
Right, and that'd be, it's a really bad situation.
You're setting a height, and there's water under the lake. It's essentially like an eminent domain quitte dig. It's not a gift.
It would be a cake, then.
It'd be a dig.
Either way, I think there's gonna be legal wranglings, and there always have been. And if you look at the NAS decision that just came about this week. NAS was the Northwest Water Supply Project over in Minot. Manitoba, state of Missouri, Sioux, North Dakota, over water rights and water quality. And it was, one, it was a thimble full of water out of the Missouri rivers, Lake Secoc, we had to provide water supply for Northwestern, North Dakota, Minot, Baton Rouge, those areas through there. 16 years I was in court, and the decision finally came down where they approved going forward with it. You know, unless they go through a higher appellate court and try to fight it, but 16 years that one. And that was treated potable water. They were arguing about it. So, and whether or not that would, would or could have a leak and get back into the Manitoba water system. Absolutely craziness.
Crazy, at least.
Oh, boy, yep.
Common sense went out the door. Okay, anything else on that subject?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susie, congratulations. Great honor.
Okay, Kevin.
Morning. First, we got the last of the summer maintenance contracts, so we need a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign those.
Got a motion? Got a second?
Second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
And same way with the memorandum of agreements. We got all those in finally, so we need a motion for the chairman to sign them.
Got a motion, or a second? All payers say aye?
Aye.
All the moves, all the carries. Go ahead.
And then discussion on Magwater on the terminal road, this is Mark Warner, they bring this up for the discussion, so. Assuming they wanna put Magwater back on the industry. Whether they want the county to help pay for it.
Does that go along with the item number six, too, with any other roads we have in the county that want that? We pay 75% of that?
Number six, well, those are county roads, or this one.
County road.
Right. This one's actually a township road. Last year, we did it because the bridge construction, then Highway 21 was closed, and they were using that for the detour. The city helped pay for it, and we helped pay for it, and the residents helped pay for it.
Do we know if the city's on board this year?
I don't. I don't know.
Is that possible, we could find that, help pay for it?
I could, yeah. I mean, they understood that the road was closed last year also, so they were willing to help pay for it last year.
I think they kinda have a reluctance to this year.
Right.
I don't know if it's anything official, but they, we're a little reluctant to...
What's the total cost?
It's about $6,000, roughly, 65, somewhere in between there.
My, Lamont, the property owners are so willing.
I'm sure they all are. I have talked to them all. I'm sure they all are. The only one that didn't last year was the one on the Wayfarer. And it's basically from ECU off of the pavements.
One other question. We swapped this road for the truck road.
Correct.
So we ended up getting, what, two and a half miles?
Three and a half.
Three and a half miles. They got this, and they've really never done too much to it, other than get built.
They gravelled it, yeah.
They get gravelled. What do we got, like, half a mile there? Is that what it is?
It's all three quarters.
300, I'd say it's about 3/4.
We swapped it when we did the truck road project, so before it was ours then.
That was before you were on?
Yeah.
We thought it was already in work at that point.
We shared 50/50 with this terminal road.
We were sharing 50/50 with the township.
Yep, before we did the truck road project. On all, you know, all type of maintenance, whatever it was.
And they refused to put anything into this, I would imagine, though.
I think that's their opinion on every township road in there, township. I mean, there's a lot of Magwater that goes down in their township, and they don't help pay for any of it.
Okay, well, should find out, you don't like the cities, who knows?
Don't know for sure, yeah. You know, I don't wanna speak for them, but...
In their budget time, I didn't put any money in my budget for this one either. So I'd have to find it somewhere for the, for the terminal road.
And that road, the bridge will close again this summer.
Could be.
Yeah, I'm fairly confident that they still have work to do.
They do have work to do on that road.
They're gonna close some days, yeah. And that road is just so heavily traveled. It's unbelievable.
Yeah, there's no doubt about that.
We put colors out there, haven't we?
But I think you're gonna end up grading it three times a week if you don't. I think it's just gonna wash. I mean, last year, my God, it packed so hard. It was, it was almost like down the pavement road. It was a wonderful road last year.
Yeah, when the township put the gravel on and have the right one played, and it worked out great.
That road sticks together real, real well.
Get some little tiny potable in it, but...
You got any idea how many days are gonna close the underpasses here?
I don't know. Would you?
They've got six weeks worth left, and I'm not all that's gonna be up. They've gotta redo from the end of the concrete right by now, but they're up past Crow's a little bit, and then east, past the second entrance into Crow's. A lot of that's concrete, so there's, I don't know.
So they're gonna be closing that area, they're gonna be closing that section, which basically that's the bridge down there.
We had phased it in the plans that it was gonna be real tight. I think there's gonna be a few days it'll be closed.
I mean, I guess, two things. One, I'd like to know if it's gonna be closed some, is that, you know, the city should be chipping in, I would think. You know, because it's gonna be used as a detour again. And I'm fine with paying for it as long as it's a detour, but then at that point, then it becomes a question of, are we setting the policy that we're gonna pay for any township road out there? Just that simple. And I understand this road gets a ton of traffic, and it does. There's no doubt about that. But there are a lot of other township roads that get a ton of traffic up to resort areas and stuff. We're gonna start paying for 75% of the mega on those township roads. Because then at that point, you basically accept the policy, that's what we're gonna do. And that's my only, that's my only concern.
Quite honestly, there's a lot of residents that come in from that township asking if the county's willing to help pay for it. And we just direct them back to the township, but they need to talk to them about it.
Yeah, I think the Magwater is a good idea, obviously, and I think it keeps the road together really well. But there's a lot of places where it would probably be beneficial out in the county where there's a township road right next to a yard where they'd love to have Magwater. Or if we're gonna start paying for every one of those little spots at 75% cost share, it's gonna run us up and build pretty quick.
Well, one thing, to answer that question a little bit, is put a traffic counter on it, you know, on a particular road, wherever, you know. And if you don't meet a minimum requirement, you know.
Yeah, that could be part of the...
We're not doing it, you know.
Yeah, that's not a reasonable...
But I mean, if it's got as many vehicles that are going down this road, I mean, I guess we need to address it that way somehow.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a reasonable way to approach it, if you say, you know, we'll look at it... I mean, that that could be a reasonable way to approach it, if you say, you know, we'll look at it on the higher traffic road. I I think, I don't think that's unreasonable. Uh, the other one road I'm thinking of is, what's the one that's kinda west on nineteen that goes south towards all those homes down there?
That road gets. South of Walleye?
No, that's, well, that one, and then also west on nineteen where, you know, there's homes out kinda south of six mile up there. That road gets a ton of traffic too, that township.
That does, yeah.
I mean, it would be beneficial if the township would step up and say, we're gonna put it on you, because it would help us on building costs and everything like that. But at the end of the day, that's a ultimate decision. If they don't wanna pay for it, they don't wanna pay for it.
What you're, I'm thinking your diagram must be about three miles back in there?
Yeah, that that gets a pretty good amount of traffic too, if we even have a counter dip, but I guess it's pretty good amount of traffic. It's south of Walleye. That gets a lot of traffic, you know, there's a lot of places like that where it would be beneficial, but.
Yeah, the whole county of Creo or township of Creo, they must do close to six miles.
They do.
If they pay for it, so.
Yeah, I mean, and then, so then you've got some townships are willing to pay and some aren't, and it it just makes for kind of a, kind of a, I don't know what you wanna say, but it's just, it's disproportionate.
How are they?
Overhandling it.
Are they getting the residents to pay some of that then, Kevin? Do you know?
In some places, like, uh, I don't know how they pick and choose, but some roads they pay for all of it, and some roads they help ask for the residents to help pay. I don't know how they determine.
Depends on the residents or living.
Maybe they do a count thing, do the most or something.
I'm not sure, I guess I could ask them. May- maybe they don't have a, a formula, but maybe they just have friends, I don't know, I shouldn't.
No, it might just be they look at it and go, that one gets traveled a lot. Let's do that one.
I think that's how they do it somewhere, because.
That one definitely gets.
This road they don't do it all.
That one gets a lot more than that one, but for not that one.
Do the, uh, is there less plating where we put the sign?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not sold as a, a stabilizer, but it acts as a sta- it's sold as a dust suppressant. But it does act as a stabilizer, there's no question about it. The only thing is it only lasts for one season.
Well, it's good to see, help as a part of it.
When are we planning on getting this done, I guess?
It's usually around before the Fourth of July.
Okay, so we get a little bit done, so the city, the city will chip in and then we can figure out.
We've got that tank down in our shop, and they have filled that tank with chemical, but Creo Township themselves takes up most of what's in that tank. So they pay for quite a bit.
Okay.
But I, you know, it.
We'll take it till now and go forward to your next meeting and see what.
They usually don't start till the low limits come off, and that's roughly three weeks away, so.
Very good.
Yeah, the base stabilization on the truck route now, kinda looking into that, uh, there's two ways of putting that down. You can turn all the gravel up with a main canner and put it on that way, or they have a, it looks like a giant road till, what are they called? Mine, mine mill, yeah, they mill up like five inches of gravel and inject it while they're milling. And apparently that's even a little bit cheaper to do it that way, so I'm thinking of maybe bidding a project with the milling to see if we can get better prices that way.
So they mill it and then they what, roll it behind or something like that?
Yep, as they're milling it, as they're picking up this five inches of material, they're injecting the stuff into the miller. And so it gets nice uniform mixture, and then they just come behind with a motor grader and a packer and shaper that that way. Or the plan I had was for a motor grader or a disc or something to just go in there, tear it for five inches with that piece of machinery. And then there'd be a giant windrow, and then they slowly uh water that down with material and and pack it that way. It's a little more labor intensive, I guess, but.
There's outfits around there doing this?
Yes, there are quite a few that are doing this milling, that's what kinda piqued my interest.
Okay.
So I may try and do it that way, just to see if we can get the prices. I'm also talking to Mike about paying for a part of this now too, for the city. That was our agreement on the truck route, that if we have a project that we split it fifty-fifty, but it needs to be improved by before the project is done.
A good process to take a couple of months or?
No, this would be done, we'd probably do a half mile a day, so a week, depending on the weather, of course, you know.
Well, turns out, turns out how long are the projects gonna run?
But we could get the bids back within a month, you think, or?
Sure, it's something we probably, we're gonna probably have to advertise. We're we're under that hundred thousand dollar threshold, but we're close, so. In fact, this, we're probably at about, with the chemical, we're probably at about sixty to seventy-five thousand, so. We're under the hundred thousand dollar threshold, but just to be safe, I'd want to get it.
I like the idea of milling it, I think that sounds like it's kinda, you could see, you know, if you're gonna be pulling it off at the same time, you would probably get better incorporation with the product and everything, to me, I would think, when it goes back down. That sounds kinda interesting, actually.
It's a more uniform, even distribution of the material.
Yeah, yeah, seems like it, seems like it'd be kinda interesting. I I like the idea of just trying the project to see how it's gonna work.
Yeah.
Because if it's something that works really well, it might be something you might wanna utilize in other places.
Right.
So.
And the part of the sale, one, I was talking to Mike Gasker about it, you know, we lay that one, two, at least once a week, sometimes twice a week, so. After we do this project, we may only have to lay it twice a summer. I mean, that gets hard, it gets really hard. So that's gonna cut down on our maintenance costs, so.
More time you can be on the township roads, keeping them in good condition.
Right, so the money we save on maintenance, we're putting towards the project, basically.
Do we have to shut the road down to do this project, you think?
Um.
Few days or what?
There'd have to be pilot cars or something. It'd be best to shut it down, but we could probably get by without it. Depends on the time of the year, let's put it that way. If there's a lot, a lot of truck traffic or something going through, then we might wanna try and keep it open, but. I'm gonna bid as, stay open project, keep it open project.
Be cheaper if we close it now.
No, no.
No.
Be cheaper if we keep it open. No, you're right, it's cheaper if we close it, because then they don't have to fight the traffic.
Right, right.
Or they wanna do no more than once, I mean, they don't wanna do a mile at a time or nothing.
No, you can't, because it gets hard, I mean, it gets really hard, so they have to work on what they can get done in a day. I mean, if they, they don't dare get too much open and then not be able to work it, then.
Oh, why would we have to close it, do you think, before they can get it done?
Probably a week, week or less, yeah.
But the, the reclaimers only eight and a half feet wide or whatever, so you're not, you don't have to close it.
Yeah, you'd still have one lane open, basically.
Right, if you're not putting more gravel on, you don't have a windrow with a reclaiming machine, you're just going to know it up and.
Yeah, you just have to have some, have some plagers or somebody to make sure that they're safe going by the reclaiming machine and everything.
Oh, you don't, you don't want traffic control.
Yeah, we have to have plagers.
I mean, I, I think it would be beneficial to to look at, you know, like, I mean, if we keep it open, that's fine, but, I mean, for a week, it's not like we don't have, I won't. I shouldn't say that. If they close the underpass, then you don't have any truck road around, then it turns into a mess. So, and you don't know when that's gonna happen, so maybe we're better off try to just pay a little more and keep it open. Yeah.
So we might as well get it and then we'll kinda hook it up.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just thinking, you know, there's the, there's the alternate, there's the route to go around, you know, if it's a few times you gotta haul around there, it's not the end of the world having to pull through town, and you don't like to do it if you don't have to. It's a lot easier, you don't.
So we did both ways?
We could.
I don't think the traffic control cost is gonna be that much, though. I mean, a few thousand of that.
Yeah, that's.
First, first close the road, that impacts the public.
Yeah. Try to keep going, it's kind of just.
Okay.
So I'll just kinda hand it up, that's my plan now.
Okay, and you'll probably have some answers next in June, or first meeting in June or next meeting?
Let's see. Yeah, I could probably have the first meeting in June. Takes three weeks of advertising, so we have.
Next one, huh?
All right, Nelson County is planning on doing gravel, or to gravel that county land road, South of Doyan this summer. But they didn't have any estimate cost for them yet, but they just wanted to give us a heads up, and we do the fifty-fifty share cost with them. So as soon as I get cost estimates, I'll probably bring it back to you guys for a Google.
Who's your new road guy down there? They hired a new one, right?
Yeah.
Seth Hamery.
Hamery?
Yeah, H A M R Y, the one's on the ones from north.
Probably, he's a younger kid, probably.
Yeah, I haven't met him yet.
They've introduced something like that, yeah.
I just curious. Okay, six?
Uh, discussion on the Magwater for the county roads, um, I'm assuming we wanna do that again this year, so. But, um, we paid seventy-five percent on the county roads and twenty-five percent for the circles, and I guess I just need a motion to approve that.
Okay, we did, um, quite a, quite a bit last year?
Yeah, we do roughly a mile, I mean, little, little short segments and they add up to a mile.
Can I do something you budgeted for Kevin?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Yep.
I moved to approve that we do seventy-five percent on the county roads on the Magwater.
Second.
Okay, we got much, motion in a second, all payers say aye?
Right.
All the board, motion carries.
Okay, now if you remember back when I was taking bids for a little while, we had one vendor that sent us an email instead of doing the mail-in bid. So I have called for three different contractors for, or suppliers, they're not contractors, suppliers for quotes. And Husky Energy who gave us the email, it's still low, but uh, they use the same price, six hundred and seventy dollars a ton for MC eight hundred. And six hundred and thirty-five dollars a ton for MC three thousand. I called Calumet Supper here, they never got back to me. I called them twice, they never got back to me, and then I have one other bid from, it's called Normont Equipment. And their bid for MC eight hundred was seven hundred and seventy-three dollars a ton, and for MC three thousand, seven twenty-eight a ton. So it turns out that Husky Energy, who sent us the email, is still a little bitter. So I just need a, some kind of motion to accept that low.
Okay, and we'd be legal, everything's fine here, no?
They they do, you know, bidding on certain things through the state if they have to them.
If it's under a hundred thousand, we can call for those, and this will be way under a hundred thousand.
So we can accept the, you know?
Yeah.
To accept a little bit.
Okay, we got a motion back in a second, okay? Any other questions? All payers say aye.
Aye.
All the board, motion carries.
Then Kerry and I were working on the letter to send out for, um. Culvert policy. We had discussion about whether we supply the thirty-six inch culverts for, this is the letter that we came up with to send to the townships. Should I read this, or do you guys wanna read it yourself?
Give us the high point.
It was basically saying, explaining what we decided and how our state's attorney and our town will help us a little bit with this. The attorney for the townships, and it's saying that we're gonna stick with our current. Current policy that's in place now. Then I'll attach a copy of that policy with this letter. And this will go out to every township, uh, chairman. So I just need your approval, but I mean, if this, if this letter looks okay to you guys now, so we're looking to send it out.
Any questions? We're fine, please, this is what we add, right?
Yeah. Kevin had before, we just took out somebody asked you.
It's on my letter, but we can change that.
I think that's pretty fair.
Honestly, that's what CAS and all the other big companies are doing the same thing, so we're kinda following it here.
Where do we find a, uh, US Geological Survey in that map to see where blue lines are per natural range?
I have them in my office, I'm not sure, they're probably online somewhere.
I'm like after, I'm curious, how many blue line veins there are, okay?
You see this way?
No.
What do you think is staying in the policy of what we've had for years, the stain on putting culverts in?
You put culvert over thirty-six, and but you don't do the work.
We don't have a backhoe.
Well, we have to hire gun to, you know, so it's the same, you know.
This looks workable?
I I'm not so too sure on that. We got a road up there in Webster Township that was, uh, taken off the section line so that the county wouldn't have to put a bridge in. And then they put culverts, they moved the road over on the other side of the cooling, and then they did, they put culverts in. Uh, I still under the impression that, uh, uh, the county should pay, and they did, they have paid for the culverts, but we we have done the work. And I don't know if, even if we should even have to do the work.
Is that out of cooling?
Uh, it's on the main cooling that comes out of Sweetwater. And it, what it is, the road is on the east side of that cooling, but the water from the north now has to go through that road to the cooling. And we we have replaced them in the last, oh, eight years, I believe.
How many culverts is there?
There's two, two thirty-sixes in there.
Two thirty-sixes?
Yes.
That's sufficient?
Uh, it's plenty of culvert.
Plenty of culvert.
Yeah, uh, uh, in fact, I didn't think we even needed the other thirty-six in there, but the landowner at that time insisted that there's another. In fact, it wasn't the landowner, it was John Hungland, uh, said they should have another culvert in there. So we got two in there.
How many years ago was this?
Well, they changed the road in nineteen fifty when we had the big flood.
Okay.
Because that, uh, going, going west to Webster, there was three bridges in that road. And one, one in the road that went up to the farm, and then two on the, now, now there's one, one bridge just on the main road. And they diverted the cooling to the north side, so that doesn't have to go back through the road and come back out again. But I'm just afraid that, that was nineteen fifty, and if I wouldn't have been around, probably nobody would even mention it or knowing about it, but I know when it was changed.
Well, like in general, for the county, I think this serves the purpose pretty well, you know. We do take care of the county roads, and that's where a lot of the crossings are, you know, where the coolies are going through. You know, we did the grid project up here on, what road is that, Adam, up there, Redwood Jus, last summer.
That's in Morris, I don't know what happened with this, but.
You've got, seen that project? Have you seen that bridge over there that was done last summer?
The one by Windjuice?
Yeah. Brian, do you?
Start where it's at.
I know what it, what it is.
Yeah, that's.
It's the second to last bridge before, or last bridge before over.
Yeah.
On the cooling route.
I think it's really gonna help in a high water spring, you know, I think.
You mean it, it'll take the water instead of going over the road?
That's right.
We hope so.
Hope, hope so.
Like, part, uh, sometime this winter, I think a lot of people thought it was gonna get used pretty extensively through there, but I don't think, I don't know how much runoff there was, but. Instead of running up on three up there by the Webster corner, but not very much.
Yeah, it's just not.
Not, nothing high.
Right on the ends of the road, it never even went over.
Yeah, we we didn't have the fast runoff.
Uh, they didn't invest in solar, it's yours.
But we don't know what comes in the future. We could have a fast runoff, we could have a lot of snow.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't go for that.
Yeah, like a level lake, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Right.
Don't know what's gonna happen a month from now, you know.
And in looking at this, I just have one question. Brian, does, does the Water Board have a list of the established drains?
Well, right now, we have two legal drains that we deal with, they're both assessments, uh, and there's a difference between those two. The Sarkwiler was, uh, set up as a cleanout, so according to our legal advice we've gotten from our board attorney is. Um, that one, since there's a cleanout, no structures were ever changed, so the assessment should have no authority over any of the structures that are on it. The Hamer Sullivan is the one that comes, uh, from Sarkwiler, goes down through Gerski, and then meets up to the, that one was set up as a new construction. Uh, what we've, the policy we've followed is that if there was any structures changed when that was put in, then we would have responsibility for those. Uh, what we don't have is any history as if anything was changed. So it's been brought up in the past, and, uh, there, now there's a couple situations, a couple culverts went out on. So, it's been brought up in the past, and there, now there's a couple situations, a couple culverts went out on it. Uh, you know, should the assessment district be paying? Well, we don't have any history telling us that those were changed when they did the assessment or did the construction on it. So, we've been rejecting that, saying we don't have a responsibility. Uh, I guess that was kind of what I came here today, if, you know, if we need to really do some digging and find out if we do. Uh, a few of the older guys think we should be responsible for that. So, you know, if we need to look into it or change our policy on that, you know, we should get going on that, so we're handling it appropriately.
Is that on the sta, on the established cooling run then, right?
It's an established drain.
Yeah.
The legal drain from our understanding is anything that has a legal description someplace in, in the county. And we do have that in that, so that's.
Well, I, I fall back to the concept of, you know, what counts as a blue line on a geological map? Because I, I'm guessing like anything like on the Edmore Cooley is gonna count as like, was gonna be a blue line on the geological map. So, any crossing on a township road on like the Edmore Cooley, we're in charge of.
Exactly.
Same would be something with Stark, with the Starkweller Cooley or Hamer Sullivan or anything like that, I would guess.
The Sesh drains are different.
Yeah, they're a little different.
Right.
They're different beasts now. I think, so do we have like established maps on every township that says what our responsibility is versus what their responsibility is?
We'll just look at the geological maps or?
You know? Kind of interesting, we sit down and maybe have that, so you knew exactly what, what's ours and what's the townships.
So, the problem you have up there now is there's a crossing, culvert, but we're not sure if it's an established drain, is that, no, it's on?
It's on an established, uh, legal drain, cause it's an assessed area. Uh, you know, right now, the county has been supplying the culverts on them. I don't think Kevin's had a problem with that. Uh, the townships are coming back now, and they would like us to be paying for the installation on it. And it's been our policy that we haven't, but, you know?
Who's been putting them in? The townships?
No, the, the county, the, the culverts that we have a problem with, the county has always put the culverts in. The township has never, uh, did the work.
We had one last summer that they did the work on, and one this summer that they didn't work on. On that Hamer Sullivan?
That was probably further up.
Yep, that one's further up.
But not, not on, on Webster, Webster Hamer. And that's where we have the problem now. See, last June, I, I told Kevin that the, if the cooling was dry, that the culvert was completely shot from the bottom, it was completely rusted out. Well, and I didn't know till this spring that the culvert was laying out there last fall, but the work was not done. And then now the road washed, the culvert washed out, so the road's out closed. And I got a call the other day that we are, the townships are supposed to put the culvert in, but we don't have equipment. And we have never done this work before on, on these culverts. So, we don't know where we're standing, but I think Wayne found out the other day that further down the road, that he went out and filled the road up where there's some more culverts gonna go out. And they, and I think there's three or four of them in there, that road there. So, really, there's gonna be a very high cost, so we wanna know who's supposed to be responsible for it.
And this is all on an assessed drain?
Correct, yes.
That assessments are being collected for now?
Yes.
Kevin, exactly how have we handled this in the past?
The assessed drains go back to the Water Board, where they're, the assessed drain, the money that's coming into this, from the assessment for the assessed drain is supposed to be used to install these according to the Centric Code. Whether there's money in that account or not, I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know, maybe.
As far as the assessment side, we can get the work done if we need to. Uh, it's just we, if we've been incorrect in our policy, you know, we need to get that fixed so we can get this worked out and keep these roads open, I guess, is the biggest thing.
Are you looking for the commission to do exactly?
We're looking.
Tell you to know that also?
I just heard about this yesterday. I thought, you know, if this is the problem, I heard about it three times within two hours that, oh, this is more than what we thought. I'd better come in and let's try to get it solved or see what we need to do.
See, what I understand is if, well, we've never had to put these culverts in before, and now we're supposed to put them in. So, this is what we wanna know. Are we supposed to put them in, or is the county gonna put them in, or is somebody gonna put them in?
Townships put them in before.
We've never done, done these big ones.
Webster.
Except, except the one on my road there, where they changed the rule. The township did pay for those.
Oh, you're probably right, Webster.
You furnished the culverts.
Yeah.
And I, we, we offered to pay, uh, put, put them in on that.
Most of these culverts are, haven't been touched in forty years, Kevin?
Probably, I don't know, I spent this, but I'm alive.
Forty, is that what you said?
I'd guess of at least that, because I can't remember much ever being done on them.
And now they're all rusted out.
These new culverts won't last that long.
They're all rusting out at the same time.
Yeah.
What's happening?
Well, I think the biggest problem is they're set in water. And any kind of set water, they just completely rust out.
Well, honestly, forty years for a metal culvert. It's about a lifespan.
And these are big culverts, right? Forty-eight inches?
Yeah.
Well, if we put this policy in place, then it's up to the townships to put them in, pretty cut and dry, is that correct?
Unless it's a Sesh drain, then the Centric Code is different for a Sesh drain.
And it comes back to the Water Board?
Yep, that goes to the Water Board.
Do they have the ability to put an assessment on if they don't have the money in the account?
I assume.
Yes, and we've changed the policy in the last couple of years that we're keeping money in the account for problems when they come up, whereas in the past, their, the accounts have pretty much been around dry.
Well, if it's in a, so, to wrap my head around this.
I'm trying to do my head around it.
So, the culverts, the culverts are on a township road, on an established drain in an assessment district.
Wow.
There, it's an assessed drain.
There, it's not, right, exactly.
But it's an established drain that's assessed for maintenance and upkeep of the drain. On a township road, and they're over forty-eight inches, or over thirty-six inches.
Right.
Forty-eights. Well, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but to me, that means we pay for the culverts and the Water Board pays for the install.
The, what, kind of the way we looked at it is, you know, if there was a thirty-six inch culvert in the road, and then the assessment came through, did the work on it, and the plan's called for a forty-eight to be there, okay, now we were changing it. So, that culvert is our baby after that, because we said it had to be bigger. Uh, you know, if it, if it was cleaned out and the thirty-six was left there, our lawyer had said that, you know, that means that that's still county policy covers that one since we didn't change it. So, that's the question that's in place now, is to.
So, that's what we're talking about.
In the past, we've just turned them down, and, you know, it hasn't come back. But, you know, it's the same area, same two townships, same guys, so, you know, if that's incorrect, if you've got something to tell us, we're not doing it the way we should, we need to change and.
What portion of Centric Code deals with Water Boards? And what their responsibilities are versus the township when it comes to culverts?
There's supposed to be five.
Yeah, sixty-one, sixty-one.
Because like in this, in this twenty-four oh eight that we're referencing in the letter, that's just county culvert upkeep, maintenance, and expensive furniture. It, it has nothing to do, and it says established drains, but then I suppose you have to go look at the Water Board section to then see what the applicable sections of that would have to do with anything then.
Yeah, you're exactly right. No, it's all interpretation of the Centric Code, you know?
Well, there's culverts for surface water drainage, which is another part of the Centric Code, so.
Somebody's gotta clean up the Centric Code, put it all on one spot, so I don't know, I'm looking for it, so I'll look at it.
It sounds like the county should be responsible, but we wanna know for sure, you know?
Right.
Well, there's a drain just as a project.
It's an established drain.
Well, what's, what's the Water Board think, Brian? Where are they at? I guess let's get a feeling there.
Well, like I said, in the past, we've had this come up, and we've, you know, upon advice from our attorney, we said, you know, that's not our responsibility. We don't have any history of saying that we replace that, that it should be our responsibility to do it, so that's what we've done in the past.
Even if it's an assessment district?
Right. And really, the only problem we, place we'll have the problem is on that Hamer Sullivan drain, since that's our only new construction on that.
Who's your attorney?
Uh, Bruce Skibbels.
Should we let Kerry look into it?
Yep.
Have her answer for us, and we, I'm hesitant about trying to somebody have a motion here, you know, we're kind of like, we don't wanna do the wrong thing, you know, according to the law, we have to, so. And we wanna be fair with everybody, and like we've done in the past, the county has furnished the culverts.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, very beneficial as a colony goes, cause we're pulling money from everybody in the county to do something like that, you know? The benefit of putting them in is gonna help the local area, the roads and the school buses and whatever's gotta be used on that road. So, that's a benefit to a lot of people, so. Probably there or down, not just throw it all on the township's shoulders, cause I, I know that townships are strapped, we know they're always strapped, you know? Because you have a large tax base to draw funds from, but.
Well, that, that, that's why we're, we're concerned, because in our township, there's going to be about twelve big culverts.
They're gonna have a problem.
There've been two bridges taken out, the culverts have been put in. And we know that one, the road was a big hole in the road, well, that means there's a hole in that culvert someplace. So, how many years is that gonna go yet, or is the road just gonna disappear?
It's gonna get very costly for the township.
Yeah.
And I guess, I like the idea of using an assessment district. If, if the culverts are in an assessment district, then we can come back to the assessment district and the Water Board and draw some funds from the whole drainage system. You know, and that's including the county. And then you can get a hold of some funds there to do things like this. But we're gonna have to be pretty selective on, you know, what culverts we replace. And, and make sure we have a large enough culvert system to handle the water. I know Kevin's led us down the Wrighton Road numerous times, as far as saying, well, I think we should have some more culverts here. I, over the years I've been on the commission, I've heard you say that quite a few times, like, maybe we should have five here, or three here, instead of two or four or something. So, we'll have to work together and, you know, and this policy's kinda like, that's the way it's gonna be, you know? We'll have to work together.
You know, and some of these.
Try to get a good answer here, somehow.
These ones, they could have been replaced too, you know, upgraded on the, when the assessment did their cleanout on that. And now, we just don't have any history of it. So, I mean, that would have been in the early nineties. You don't think that's that long ago, but there ain't too many people that are remembering what culvert was changed at that time, so. That brings up another point, is when Kevin leaves, we're gonna lose a lot of institutional knowledge about these culverts and stuff here.
No doubt, no doubt.
Kevin did say that he wasn't gonna leave for it.
Yeah.
But, that, that's another thing, uh, that this should be looked into. If, if these culverts go out when the assessment is on, I can see that. But what happens is that assessment goes off, say it's on for ten years, and then it goes completely off. And then the culvert goes up. Is that gonna be under that or not? That's something that we can't answer.
Is it written in the Centric Code, Adam, that assessment districts are responsible for the culverts?
That's the lawyer.
So, definitely.
That's not a case, really?
I mean, all the time, forever?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the Water Resource District part of Centric Code right now, what constructions, the bridges and culverts and the cost. And there's all kinds of language, and it looks like it was probably, probably written in eighteen nineties, I would guess. Cause they're talking about anything over one hundred dollars, well, hundred dollars, that doesn't buy, doesn't buy the fuel to get to the place anymore.
And it, and it's not just the Centric Code, then you gotta go look at the attorney's general opinion, is that interpret the Centric Code, and the cases that tweak the code?
Well, yeah, here, here it has, it makes reference to part of an assessment drain or drainage process, and if, if there's a certain, then it's a, it's a forty-sixty split. The county pays forty and the resource district pays sixty. So, I, I think part of the problem is that there's about seven sections in Centric Code that make reference to it, and there's no later to yawn on. I, I agree with that, that we, we have to come up with a cohesive policy that's gonna work for everybody, so there's certainty on how things are getting paid for, and who's paying for what, so then everybody knows everything's gonna be handled. And there's still gonna be situations where stuff comes up. But at least if you got good backing in place, and you can say, this is what we've done in the past, this is what we're planning on doing in the future.
If this was a Starkweller Cooley, you know, we'd just pay for it. But since this is a drain, then it's, you know, we got these issues.
But I think the way to dance around it is make sure we keep that assessment district in order and put together, and go back on that to pay for some of the costs of putting these in, because the assessment district is the one that's gonna benefit from this. You know, no matter where the assessment districts at, you know, if they were willing to go on that initially, then there should be some maintenance money there to take care of things over the years. And we all agree that these culverts probably rusted prematurely some because of all the water laying in them the entire year. You know, most of the time, water comes out, culvert area goes dry, and they don't probably rust a lot, you know? But when they lay in water half-full for years, they're gonna go to hell, that's all there's to it.
Well, it depends on the chemistry of the soil too, maybe they'll, you know?
Yeah, you get close to the lake, it gets worse.
I think all our soils got alkaline salts in it, so they're, they're gonna rust. They're using a lighter material and everything nowadays, so.
It's like, you put fences that were in the lake down here in the bottom, you know, where the pastures were and all that, everybody's worried about that guy tangled around a prop, you know? Boat prop. Well, I said, Christ, it's been a year, that fence is gone, I mean, it's gone, you know?
Tension in breaks.
It deteriorates. So, if you put water in that, or while you're in that lake, it just goes away.
Asshole, same way.
Through it.
There's the ground.
But I think we should look at it some more, try to come to a, like, if we were in a western county, it'd be pretty cut and dry, you know? But here with all the water, we're gonna make sure we have a policy that people can live with and are not upset with us, you know? And we don't wanna go through this every month, do we, Adam?
In the meantime, does that culvert need to be installed?
Yes, yes, it's laying there.
Yeah, that's the problem, it needs to get in.
Uh, we're, we're lucky that the people that live on the other side, they, just for a quarter of a mile, they can go around.
Yeah.
But otherwise, the road is shut off.
Yeah, there's a gigantic cold road.
And the water's gone down quite a lot now.
That cooling is just about dry now.
Could be workable now, could you?
Well, if you have the right equipment, you could.
By next month, it would.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, yeah. But that was our intention up here today, to let you guys think about some things that are propping up out there.
We were gonna rent it back, oh yeah, Kevin? Do you have that in your works?
Do, do I have this one scheduled though?
The last time you put a culvert in, you put it in in the fall, and the spring it completely washed out into the field. And then I think soakers went up there with their cat and stuff, put it back in.
Well, I remember that.
I don't know if Kevin remembers that or not.
So, one of them high-water years, huh?
Yeah. Well, what happens is there's two cool, there's two coolies that meet, and then you go through this culvert.
Is one culvert enough?
Uh, no, there was one culvert in there, and they put two in there.
Now it's better?
That really runs when it runs, trust me. There's a lot of water goes through there.
The problem happens when it's iced up, and then all of a sudden, the water builds up from the north and lets loose, and then you get a lot of flow coming.
Well, we'll, we'll put this on hold, this policy until we can clarify it a little better and clean it up, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't want hard feelings. Thank you, guys.
So, pulled off, and put, put this letter up?
I think it, I, it, it seems pretty, I mean, it sounds like we've got most of it figured out, but there's just a couple little questions we gotta hammer it out. But I, I think that's, wait on it until, until Sue goes to take her out. She's on my head. She's unplanned hit.
I did talk to John's township and I think they're gonna fall there.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that normal township, well, you've got our policies, son. It's just that one question of that assessment drain, how does it get handled between township, us and water board? That's something we, we can hammer it out.
I would think as, as a, as a, if we're paying that a certain time, you would expect that.
Yeah, and then I'll do that, and then it's your, um, see if I'll.
That would be my thought too. The question I think is, is-
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the difference between, and I think Brian raised the point, like, is in century code, it's the difference between construction and maintenance. Of the assessment, is there a construct, is it there, they pay?
Does it have an eighteen word in there also?
Well, that's, that's the question is, I, I, I think that's the crux of it though, is, is their attorney is looking at century code and he's saying, construction costs are in century code, maintenance isn't necessarily explicitly in century code. So, you have to pay for construction or any resize because that counts as construction, but maintenance is maybe another issue. But that doesn't mean we can't adjust our policy to say we want to maintain it.
Right.
We can do over and above, I mean, that's, that century code's the minimum standard, we can always go above that if we want to. Which I don't think, I guess in my opinion is if there's an assessment there. And the water board's gotta handle it the way they need to handle it because that's a whole nother separate board, but that's what the assessment's for, in my mind.
Absolutely.
That's why you're paying the assessment is for maintenance.
The assessment's perpetual, I think, you've got that up for.
But I would, they just want to make sure they have certainty going forward too, which is completely reasonable.
It's benefiting now, huh?
That's why I said if it was like the start with a coolie or something, we would have just.
Yeah. Assessment drains are kind of a whole nother, one other beast.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, you know, this policy is probably fine for coolies, things that we're obligated to take care of.
Right.
But when you get to the assessment district, like you say.
That's exactly right.
It's, it's, it's just one little subsection of the whole.
Do we need that in here or do we need a separate paper for that?
I would say, because that's, uh, we only got the one assessment drain in Prince County, so.
You know, which is kind of crazy, what do you think about it?
It is.
With how big our county is, you would think we would have a lot more than a couple of established drains.
Right.
And they're trying to establish, they have one one right now, it was an assessment drain.
It'd be crazy, Adam.
Well, it's just like. Clean it's a clean, huh?
Yeah, so it's not really the same drain.
It, they're not actually creating a drain, they're just making it clean.
It's a, it's a maintenance.
It's a maintenance deal.
Yeah.
It's a maintenance.
The state is not like they want.
Oh, we'll look into it, well.
Very well.
Oh, well, I don't see it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
And your bills were approved, you, you have the other one, yeah? You, we're ready, Kevin?
I think so, yeah.
Great. Thank you, thank you. New business, discussion on cemetery. Well, this is your company too, Kevin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm about the question.
Actually, um.
I didn't know what that was.
I did, I did.
Oh, okay.
Um, I was contacted by a couple of individuals, Chain Lake, Chain, is it Chain Lake Cemetery, yes?
Chain Lake Cemetery.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna do anything there, what, what, I don't even know what our responsibility is. There's headstones tipped over, there's mowing and, can we get to it? Can they get to it? Are you gonna make it so that John Key Public can get to it?
They still have a cemetery association, correct?
Yes.
Then they're responsible still.
Right, we only do the abandoned ones.
I, I, I think what we talked about last year and is, on some of these roads that are coming out, is doing a, a cattail spray on them. Then the water board does it and to see what's there. You know, once we get those cattails knocked back a bit, we can see what's there on the road. We can see, you know, and I know, I've probably talked to the same people in that Chain Lake Cemetery. And, you know, it's, it, it's very isolated because you can't get to it or you haven't been in the past. It's been somewhat in water, parts of it have been in water now, I think probably it's mostly out of water. But like you said, some of the headstones are in disrepair, they had tipped over, we hadn't started or, we hadn't started. But, um, we had some people come in and they had a map of the cemetery with who was on there. But we had Steve Moe do a, a copy, a digitization of that. So, we have that many different printout again, so other people can, it, it's not, this is my map, I'm, I'm not gonna borrow it out kind of thing. So, we made some copies of that. And people have been going through there and trying to put the names down that they remember that wasn't on that initial map. So, once they're able to get back in there, they can kind of go back and, and with the headstones and try to get them in the right places. But I think that's, again, is, it, it's up to the, that congregation, that cemetery association. You know, until it becomes an abandoned cemetery, it's, it's not.
I, I think it's a twofold question, one, the cemetery association is probably, is obvious, you know, in charge of fixing headstones and getting it cleaned up. But the question is, that, that's been raised, I mean, I've talked to people before too, is how can we find a better way to, uh, you know, get there? Yeah, I mean, plan is simple, I mean, and, and, and that, that's where our, I think our aspect comes in. Is can we find a way to make access available? And that's where, you know, first off, we gotta see what kind of shape the road is in, if it's out of the water. Or is there, you know, an alternate route that we can find? I know that they have gotten there in the past, I think, through taking some, through the fields in the fall and stuff after crops came off. And kind of like similar to that one that we have in the southeast corner where you gotta wait for, the only time we can mow it is once the crop's off because that's the only way you can get in, you know? It's a similar situation here, I mean, and I, I, I'm empathetic to the situation because, you know, it's kind of frustrating and want to get in and go see their, you know, gravestones and stuff. And so, it's a matter of how can, you know, the question of the past is then is there any FEMA dollars or any, and just, we don't have a revenue stream to pay to, to do it. And there's a pretty decent amount of road that we'd have to fix up to get in there on the township run. Or the township, and the township can't afford it, there's no possible way they got, they can, they can own it. So, it's, it's that never ending problem of how do we do something, because we all want to do something, but.
Yeah. The shortest route's about a mile long, so it's not gonna be a cheap thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not like there's just one spot that's under water, we can probably try to get a pop back out again and.
Probably no hills on the road either, is there?
Yeah, it's all over ground and, I went over there and looked at it a couple of years ago, once it started to come out a little bit when they were starting to do some things with it.
Did you get to the cemetery?
No, I couldn't figure out how you get in there because once you get over to that area, it's just, it's cattails and it's water and.
So, county tent, right, I mean, like southwest.
Kind of southwest west.
Yeah, the county tent, is that kind of right?
Yeah, 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 before the curves.
Yeah. You can look at it on, you can find it on Google Maps and then kind of find kind of how the township roads are supposed to sneak in there, but you can't see anything anymore because it's all.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just cattails over for all of them.
Right, right across the road from where Garland wasted, Farmstead was.
That's where it is. General idea.
I do tend to agree with you, I think the first step is probably trying to assess what's there for road bed or, is there anything we can even maybe try to clean it up so we can get in there?
And that's where killing the cattails, you know, when those cattails are, they hold the moisture in the road and until you get those dead and start drying up the road, it's tough to, you don't get in there.
You know, you hate to light those cattails on fire in the fall because then you're gonna end up probably damaging some headstones. As it goes through there, but, you know, because there are some pine trees, some other vegetation that would burn pretty readily to it, there was.
It's kind of high area, the lower section.
It was a little higher.
There, there was a low area that was, that was a corner of the northwest corner is, was lower and that was the part that was inundated and, and in water. The driveway to it is, is on a higher section, but then it kind of has some low areas in it that, you know?
Well, it's something we'll have to look into and, you know, even one Jerusalem out there, you know, it's pretty high now. I actually, I think with a loader or something, a guy to clean that, it'd be really out the road and I think you could drive there without driving in water or something. But there's trees and posts and stuff on top of the road bed, so, in that one section, but it gets pretty good now.
Well, one of the-
I don't know if anybody checked it back or not.
One of the things that was suggested or asked or, or talked about is as these cemeteries that we have within the county come out of the water and dry up, I think there's probably a couple of them. Is maybe that's something that whether National Guard could come in as a training exercise and build a dike, ring dike around them to prevent them from going back in the water if the water comes back up, um, just to protect those. Otherwise, you're looking at moving a cemetery and that's something that I, I think would be extremely cost prohibitive. But, you know, if you could somehow protect them, you know, if there was something that the, the guard could do as a training exercise, you know? And if we could somehow find the material for that, you know? And whether N R C S, you know, I know they do Farmstead ring dike programs, but I'm not sure if they would do something or have something for a, for a cemetery.
That'd be an avenue. It would be an avenue for the National Guard, you know? They're looking through projects, benefit the community at times and, you know, they want to do construction projects also.
Never, it never hurts to talk to them, at the very least, and see if there's, at this point, it's just kind of like put out some feelers and see if we can figure out some way to do something.
Here, I got this letter, look at that one. Just got it today. Did you get it to him?
I think the plant at Dillon Scottville, that's that one.
Well, um, and I can't remember if it's like Midwest or Midland helicopter that has done that work in the past for the, the county. The joint board had them spray the, the Morris and, I don't know when they were doing it. And I thought it was fairly reasonable, you know, if, if, you know, maybe we can find some of that or get an estimate anyway. Or, or find the roads that would, would benefit from it and see how, how many miles of, of road we'd have and then, and then we can come up with a, an estimate or a price for spraying those.
Is, is the land around the cemetery being used now, farmed? No.
I don't think so, I don't think you can get there with the equipment either.
I haven't been up on Ten for a long time, but I mean, there must be land south of Ten now that's being recouped, right?
Moving it.
Recovered.
And last year, we were able to drive from highway two over to Ten, you know, north, going through some fields and.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, so, i- if, if it stays, if we get some of this drier weather, I said, we'll, we'll be able to do that again. And, and people will figure that out and how to get from A to B kind of thing. And whether or not that front street opens up again, uh, not sure, but that'd be a good, good road, you know? Just for emergency services purposes, you know, if you're on a call for a sheriff's department or something and you're over at Church's Ferry and you have to get to Edmore. You know, if you had a way to get there cross country or something, that'd be a lot better than going all the way around kind of thing. But, um, you know, that's kind of the way it used to be before things started flooding. And, you know, we used to have all these different roads that were interconnected within the county that we could go from point A to point B.
We got, we got some bridges up there for the ones that are underwater still or that are coming out though, like, how many bridges do you think we have out there that?
There's the Dion Bridge, there's a couple over by Church's Ferry, you know, right on down there, I would say maybe five, you know?
Just the bridge up there that you can, you can see a person.
Well, all you have to do is start talking about that and it'll start raining next month.
And that, and that, and that's the long-term problem too, is if, if we had any certainty, we'd say, okay, let's, let's go in and fix this road.
Right, true.
But you could put a decent amount of money into it, get it in good shape and then all of a sudden, you know? And there goes, there goes everything you just did because there's no way we're gonna be able to raise it to fourteen fifty-eight or something to be able to get in there. I mean, it's just, it's so cost prohibitive that.
Now that you brought bridges up, did you ever get anybody to inspect that bridge south of Church's Ferry?
They did, they came back to me and said they need to hire a diver or something to go in there and check for. So, that's rated at zero tons or something.
The search and rescue isn't, you know, I, I suggest maybe get one of them guys to go over there and do it.
I would have to just direct them to the state, the state would be the one.
Yeah, state do it.
But I can do that, I will do that, I won't let the state know that the search and rescue, but.
I'd be interested in it. And that, you know, not that you can't get there, but that's another road to another cemetery over there.
That's the second road, but, yeah.
Yeah. Cause there's that cemetery, I can't think what the name of it is, down that road to the, to, to the right.
That big one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, cause you know Benson County came from that church over to the Benson County or the Ramsey Benson line there. They fixed that road from the church to that one.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, all those roads going across there now are all open.
Are they?
Yeah. I don't know if they're open to the public, but they're open. They, they were in there, put the culverts back in that one and gravelled.
You think Benson County did that?
I know Benson County did that.
Their township road or?
I don't know if their town.
Their township road.
I would, I would assume they're probably township roads because they're.
It's possible the firm did it themselves too, I don't know.
Yeah.
They, they would benefit from it.
I, I got a sneaky feeling it was probably a little bit of both because like you said, you know, I know for the tolls, since that cuts ten, fifteen miles up in there.
Right.
Going around business and they're one of the ones that are talking about that other bridge that, you know, that would save them some more time, so.
You know, I gotta assume that that saved across, I mean, I wouldn't be afraid to cross it, but.
I've driven across it, but yeah, there's that liability factor hanging there.
All right, we've got the cemeteries, I hope, organized. Move on, evacuation procedure handbook, approve it, I guess, in place and working fine, handy, right here now.
Um, the only change that she made from last year was to add, um, our office as a contact in case she's not available. As a backup.
Do we need clarification on what we're calling that building? You know, is it the old sheriff's residence, is it the heritage center? Because I thought the heritage center was down at the, well, but we continue to call, and, you know, our meeting place, the heritage center.
Cause that one says it here.
Meet in the parking lot east of the heritage center, meet in parking lot east of the cemetery.
We should make that change.
Right, tell them how to change it.
Otherwise, you gotta go two blocks.
Well, you know, it just, you know, because sometimes, I don't know, people call that the, a heritage center or what they want to call it. But to me, it's always been the sheriff's residence.
Yeah, the old sheriff's.
You know, um.
I think it would probably change that because they were together at one time years ago.
Hey, that's opposite of, of, of. Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's, I see the note, like.
Yeah, I didn't catch that one, I was looking at it.
Eric, you better change that.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the policy with, with, tell him, tell, tell him Eric made that, that change.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We got a second, all three are ready.
I am.
All, all motion carry, through site operation.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Second? We're good? Do you second?
Yeah, I second, yeah, 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 sorry.
All papers, yeah. Excuse me.
No, I was just hoping.
All, all motion carries. Visitors and delegations, and then, so it's a doxys, we've had enough doctor today, you know? Report on portfolio, we better do that, so, go ahead. Report on Barstool, you know, they do that, go ahead.
Oh, um. Well, everything's pretty quiet, you know, the jail, they're, they're putting in their surveillance systems, they're going at it pretty, pretty good, things are moving right along. I think they're actually just a tick ahead of schedule. Other than that, things have been pretty quiet. Unless Ed has more about it.
I don't know anything.
Not that far, just as, uh, as the bills show that they're quite busy out there at the sheriff's office, so.
Yeah, we got, got arrested for a few months at the beginning of the year, and the weather warmed up, and all of a sudden, things go up nuts again.
Jeff?
Uh, Andy S U, I know Bill started his, uh, weekly radio programs for lawn and gardening and all those kinda stuff. Uh, I did see in the legislature they passed, or reestablished, or refilled in the, the money for the extension fifty-fifty. Um, I don't know when we see that, or kinda thing, when that goes into effect, or, I don't know, you remember last session, we kinda were asked to do a sixty-forty split or something like that? I think they're back down to about fifty-fifty, which is probably good news. Um, but, uh, I know they're busy up there with all the different four-H activities and extension, and, um, and Harry, uh, obviously is, by looking at the, uh, the L E C, nobody has a lot of incarceration, so she's very busy. That's about all I have.
Dave?
Adam? Well, Steve was in here, and, uh, Roger was in here, some crazy going on there, um. Social Services, we had our first work group meeting, I can't remember, I mean, we tried, I think it was last week.
Twenty-nine?
Yeah, something like that. We were, I think we're supposed to meet again this evening, but we were talking about baby moving it, and I couldn't recall, I got a message from Rhonda, so I'm gonna go for talk afterwards. Either way, Wayne, uh, we had a meeting that's, uh, set, uh, the, uh, we could send it, the twenty-four passed, uh, so the zone setup is going to occur. Uh, Benson is on board with it, uh, we kind of talked a little, the differences in our, uh, insurance differences in, uh, obviously compensation and things like that, and some, that looks like we got it pretty well hammered out. Uh, the question is now, um, uh, I'm talking with Rhonda, I think what we're gonna do is she's just gonna put the plan for putting the zone together, uh, cause you can get it approved at any point by the state now, uh, and, and try to get the, the ball rolling on that, and how it's gonna, how it's gonna function. So, uh, we're gonna hopefully, uh, at some point here, I'm hoping in the next little while, we should have a plan in place, get it approved, and then at that point, if the work group's happy with it, it'll come back to all the commissions then for approval, I think is kinda how it has to work. Uh, once the, once that plan is approved, it goes to the state, the state has to approve it, uh, then the zone goes live at a certain date, and then we have to hire in a director. Uh, so then technically, if Rhonda wants to be the director, then she has to reapply for her job, depending upon how it all works, so that comes down the road. But, uh, either which way, it seemed to be, uh, I think it's gonna be fairly, fairly smooth, fairly seamless, um, overall. Uh, housing authority, nothing crazy, we actually meet Tuesday again, and so things are going there. I think we got something else?
Hey, Social Service, nothing other than that zone setup, I guess.
Adam, are you free to talk about that Ford Devil's Lake that Summers?
Free to appoint, uh, I guess, what's the question?
Um, the package that the city just approved, is that anything that we need to be concerned about, or?
Well, I guess, that's what you, what you invite concern.
So they were just guaranteeing some financing, and was that the deal?
Yes, the Ford Devil's, uh, was, there was the question between who could, I guess, I can go back to the beginning to a point, we don't have any D A or anything, but I'll try to be careful what, what I say. Um, basically, uh, they needed some, some financing, uh, they put a package together. We were approached to Ford Devil's Lake about the question of would we be willing to guarantee and back a portion of the loan, uh, just to make it a little more palatable to the, to the, uh, the lenders in, in the situation. Um, the question was, was the cit, did the city have to back the guarantee, or did Ford Devil's Lake have the ability legally to back the guarantee? Um, after some back and forth, we determined that Ford Devil's Lake had the, had the ability to back the guarantee, but the city had to approve us backing it.
Okay.
And, and we felt that, uh, I guess in my mind, it was a no-brainer, I mean, you, you've got a, a good employer that's been here for.
Yep.
At forever, basically.
Yeah.
They need a little bit of help, uh, you know, uh, it's eighty good jobs, and, uh, we wanted to stay here, so. And, and they're right in the wheelhouse of, of primary sector, obviously, where we've been focusing, so, yeah, that's basically what it could. Other than that, I don't think we have anything crazy going on for Hill Lake, uh, uh, old, uh, El Green Building is moving along. I think, but they're hoping to be live sometime in the later this fall.
Okay, I have nothing else on portfolios then, so. Anything else, announcements? None?
Mother's Day is coming, buy flowers.
I think they're gonna start pulling grain out of the road about pretty soon, so. They're out there getting ready to roll.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, we're done.
Where's your?